Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, September 7th, 2010. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Little bit of a change from our normal procedure in doing the Pledge of Allegiance. This Saturday is September 11th, a day that will forever be remembered for its turmoil, devastation, and sadness. Our homeland was violated by acts of terrorism that killed thousands of innocent men and women. There were many heroes that day, and some of those who brought special pride to all of us were the New York City Fire Department, Police Department personnel, the first responders. This day brought home to all of us how much we rely on safety personnel in our cities. As a tribute to these brave men and women, we are proud to introduce counties representing Ventura County first responders, the Ventura County Fire Protection District, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, Thousand Oaks Police Department personnel, who will lead the evening's flag salute. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On each anniversary of September 11th, we remember the events of this historic event. Honoring those present on that day allows us to express the dignity, love, and respect shown for the innocent thousands who died, for first responders, and for families of 9/11 victims. The attacks on our World Trade Center in Manhattan and the Pentagon Building in Washington, DC took the lives of literally thousands of our innocent American men and women. And let us not forget the lives lost in the Pennsylvania crash of United Flight 93. It was this hijacked flight that was believed to be headed for a primary target such as the White House. And by whatever heroic actions taken by the crew or passengers, it was diverted. We mourn for each person's life lost. I ask that our audience and viewers bow their heads for a moment of silence, remembering all those who lost on Patriot Day, September 11th. Your moment, please. Patriot Day is a day we can recall and be filled with gratitude for the many who displayed courage in the truest form, selflessness, and love of fellow countrymen. On that day, the New York City Police and Fire Departments were heroes to their fellow countrymen and people around the world. Tonight, we would like to take a moment to thank our local fire and police departments who are here for us every day, protecting the families, neighbors, and homes of our community of Thousand Oaks, California. We thank you very much. Please be seated. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Here. Thank you. Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. Hearing none, there will be none. Item five, special presentations. If you'll give me just a minute to get down to the podium, we'll handle the special presentations from there. This begins the special presentation portion of tonight's meeting. Would Tom Ginther, coach of Caneo Valley's District 13 Big League Team, please join me? Coach Tom? How's it going? Glad to meet you. Haven't seen you for about a year.
2004.
Is that what it was? Okay. I'm very proud this evening to recognize a group of young men who did an outstanding job representing the Caneo Valley in the 2010 Big League World Series games this past August. The team was prepared, they focused their energy on winning, now they reach the top level of competition. There were some tough games, but their determination, team spirit, and hard work won them the title of champions. I'd like to ask the team's coach, Tom, to introduce the team and tell us more about their victory. Coach?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Thousand Oaks Board, for having us here this evening. First, I'd like to introduce Brandon Blair, one of the coaches, or Brent, sorry about that. Brent assisted us through the whole campaign there in coaching and helping out in the dugout, did a fantastic job helping out and organizing, and helping me out with the kids. Thanks, Brent. Next, Peter McAfee. Peter McAfee is going to be going to, back to Thousand Oaks High School as a senior, played right field for us. Great job, Peter. Brandon. Brandon Blair. Pitch for us, left-hander, did a fantastic job for us, came out of Thousand Oaks and now is heading out to Moore Park College. Travis Lang, a sixteen, young sixteen-year-old, one of our young guys on the team, did a fantastic job for us, too. He's going to be back to Thousand Oaks High School as a junior. Lucas Stiegl, another fine young left-hander for Thousand Oaks High School, going to be with us. Great job, Lucas. Bobby Cortez. Bobby was leaving Thousand Oaks and moving on to Pierce College, hopefully, and going to play some baseball there. Good job, Bobby. Michael Coats, pitcher, took third place, I know he doesn't want me to say anything about it, but took third place in the homerun hitting competition for us. And he's headed to Moore Park College. Great job, Michael. Josh Davis, Oaks Christian High School, did a great job for us behind the plate. Josh, thank you very much. Next, on number, what do you got, number seventeen there? God, I am, I'm lost for words again. Kyle, Kyle Sanders. Sorry, Kyle. Kyle came from Moore Park for us. He's going to head on, I think, Kyle, you're going to head to Pierce College, too, right? Correct? Oh, yeah, Cal State Norridge. Very good. Daniel Delaney, another came in, he was another young guy out of Thousand Oaks High School, catcher, did a great job for us all through there, too. Mr. O'Shea. Trevor O'Shea, number four, played second base for us, did a tremendous job for us at second base. Guys, a lot of these guys here quickly are through, you know, they all came out of Moore Park, they came out of Simi Valley, they came out of Westlake and Thousand Oaks, and to put this team together, they all, we gelled very well together, and they did a fantastic job. You know, we had some great times getting to know each other, bonding together. We all went up to Washington, Bremington, Washington, did a fantastic job up there, playing some baseball in some cool weather, then we felt the circumstances of the South and went to the East Coast there and felt the temperatures go from a nice sixty-nine, seventy-five degrees to a hundred to ninety-eight percent humidity. And the boys persevered and did a fantastic job. We battled through a couple of loser brackets, got to the final, and we were this close from getting it. And very proud of what these guys did, and you know what, and I think the community should be proud of them, too, and hopefully, you know, we'll get another shot at it next year. Also give special thanks, these guys all did a very, contributed a great deed where we went out and visited a hospital out in South Carolina where they all got to go sign baseballs and gave away hats and pins to all the young kids that we visited at the hospital. So that was a great deed that these kids did, and it was a great honor and a great thing that these guys could go out and represent the West Coast for that. Really appreciate that. I'd also like to introduce Rob McAfee, president of Caneo Valley Little League, and Roger Lazar, who is the DA of District 13, who are, they are with us all the way, and as you well know, Roger's been there year after year, so he contributed a lot to us. First year for a lot of us, so we thank you very much. And to end this, I'd like to give special thanks to the ABDGs, Caneo Valley Board members, and the, and the members of Thousand Oaks here for the commendation that you've given us, okay? We had a lot of support for this team this year, and it made things a lot easier for the families. So thank you very much. Okay?
I had to smile when you introduced it. Roger Lazar gives new meaning to senior league, so. When I came to the Caneo Valley as a twelve-year-old, he was coaching, so that'll give you some idea. Gentlemen, this commendation is in honor of Caneo Valley District 13 Big League Team, 2010 World Series United States Champions. Caneo Valley District 13 Big League Team, representing District 13 Big League Baseball, Southern California Big League Baseball, and Western Regional Big League Baseball, won the 2010 Big League World Series United States Championship in Esley, South Carolina. And the team had an impressive thirteen wins and one loss going into the World Series, outscoring their opponents by one hundred fifty-eight to fifty-nine runs, and finishing seventeen and three at the World Series. And in the World Series, the team lost one game at the hands of the Southeast Team from South Carolina, who had subs from the New York Yankees, oh, no, that wasn't them. And then bounced back to beat Illinois nine to three, the heavily favored Southwest Louisiana Team, five-two, and the favored Team Southeast, South Carolina Team, five-one, to win the United States Championship. And the team, in its fifth visit to the World Series in the past six years, again showed outstanding character while representing the City of Thousand Oaks, demonstrating dedication, commitment, and the sportsmanship of true champions. Now therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Caneo Valley District 13 Big League Team and congratulate the team, manager, and coaches on their 2010 World Series United States Championship. Gentlemen, congratulations. City's proud of you. Let's get a picture. I'd like to invite the rest of the council up, if they would, and we'll get a picture with the team. Guys, if you don't mind waiting for a minute. That's good to know that the great American pastime is still alive and well in Thousand Oaks. Will the clerk please call public comments? Item six?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Thirteen people have presented cards. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. The first speaker this evening is, in fact, the city clerk, Mrs. Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to introduce you to our new deputy city clerk, Antoinette Mann. And Antoinette is a certified records manager and a certified municipal clerk. She has over twenty years of experience in records and information management field, and she also worked for the city from 1995 to 2001 as the records management supervisor, and has been in the consulting field since that time. And I'm very pleased to have her back to the city clerk department.
Welcome. Hello.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I'm very happy to be back here at the City of Thousand Oaks. It's a wonderful place.
Well, welcome back, and we're happy to have you. Congratulations. Thank you, Linda. Before I start calling the speakers, we have two written statement cards. Let me check, there may be more here. We have four written statement cards from residents who want to draw attention to the, excuse me, the new bicycle path that's under construction from the end, the eastern end of Gainesboro Road, winding down through the Caneo Creek, the southern portion of Caneo Creek, around the soccer fields, and terminating at Jan's Road. This is a partially funded federal project that there's some money became available for it. It's under construction, and the concerns expressed, and have been expressed by others, but these four folks took time to bring their cards down, is to ensure that the design not only provides safety and protection for cyclists, but also for equestrians. And this project is on the property of the Caneo Recreation and Park District. I know we've had, I've had a number of discussions with Mr. Friedel and some of his folks, and he has also had conversations with some of the concerned equestrians on this, so that is a, that is being focused on and being paid attention to, and I, my assumption is that it'll be a great asset for everyone, cyclists, equestrians, and walkers, to cover that part of the city in a safe manner. Okay, that being said, our first, our next speaker, Dennis Jackson, followed by Charles Cronklin. Good evening, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Dennis Jackson, regional vice president, MV Transportation, representing Thousand Oaks Transit tonight. We have smoothly transitioned the general manager position from Angel Arizola, who was promoted and transferred to Washington, DC last month. I would like to introduce Cheryl Seifert, who comes to Thousand Oaks Transit with over thirty years of transit experience. Lastly, school bus, eight years, leading the Bonita Unified School District System, and in fixed route and paratransit operational leadership for Foothill Transit and Omnitrons. I would like to also be able to take this opportunity to update you on some successes Thousand Oaks Transit has had in the recent months. We implemented a Trampi's Paratransit Scheduling Software two months ago with great success, coming from a manual to computerized-based system. We've been able to lower system cost per mile and per ride, and at the same time improving our on-time performance. We brought national experts in for six weeks prior to the implementation to ensure a smooth transition. I must note, though, that this system works best with advanced reservations to ensure enhanced productivity. We are continuing our safety and sensitive sensitivity training programs for all Thousand Oaks Transit operators. Telephone doctor, enhancing our telephone skills, driver safety programs, guest, ghost riders on the coaches, and also ghost callers to our, to our system. This week, we started a shuttle service in partnership between Thousand Oaks Transit and Camarillo Healthcare District. This has had no direct cost to the city, but it has enhanced services to our citizens. We have joined and are promoting Thousand Oaks Transit in the Caneo Chamber of Commerce. On October 17th, I would like, I would hope you'd all stop by to see Cheryl and I at the Thousand Oaks Transit Bus at an Uncombing Rotary Street Fair. Last year, we helped sponsor a Stop the Bus. This year, from November 15th to the 19th, riders are invited to donate non-perishable foods to the bus to support families and needs during the holiday. MV will donate one dollar for every pound of food collected, up to a thousand dollars, and the Caneo Valley Food Bank will distribute to local needy families. Thank you for this time before you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. Would you like to make a comment? As our, as our new Transit czar?
Just a pleasure to be here in the city, and I would like to support the city as much as possible and do a good job for you.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Charles Cronk- Cronkian?
Cronin.
Cronin.
My name's Chuck Cronin. I'm a resident of 1912 Meyer Poderia Lane in Thousand Oaks. Dear Mayor Gillette and City Council, I'm speaking to you in my role as co-founder of STOP, that's the Presidential Substation Transmission Towers Opposition Project. Yes, it's still underway. We want to thank you for your support in opposing the massive project in the Tierra Rahada Valley along Reed Road, Olson Road. Over time, it's become clear that this is the wrong project in the wrong place. The most recent changes, publicized by Southern California Edison just last week, clearly highlight it's the wrong place. Then transmission lines were determined that they could not span over Route 23 at Reed Road, as the freeway is far too wide. So the transmission lines need to be tunnelled under Route 23 and will seek Caltrans approval. SCE also plans to underground the distribution lines that are on nice little wood poles along a rural Reed Road that are only eighteen inches wide, bury those poles underground, build foundations roughly the size of this podium, and width and height, along Reed Road, and because there's no room for the distribution lines, take private property along Reed Road to bury the distribution lines. Quite frankly, we think the wrong lines are being buried. Therefore, we ask for your continued support in three ways. Continue to push for undergrounding of the transmission lines. Leave the little wood poles where they are, they're just perfectly fine. And in, in the spirit of the letter to the CPUC written by, or signed by Scott, the city manager Scott Mitnick, and his counterparts at Simi Valley and Moore Park, continue to oppose the project for the environmental concerns, as the new plans identify that the area east of Route 23, between basically 23 and Olson Road, to, will be flattened, cut and filled, to make room for the lines. And to continue, and to ask the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance to come up with a very strong alternative proposal that utilizes the fifty million dollars that are currently planned for the project. It's increased already by fifty percent from thirty-six to over fifty million. To come up with a plan of conservation that basically would replace most of the inefficient air conditioning units in Thousand Oaks, which would create enough power to eliminate the speculated peak demand that's called for in the proposal. This alternative mitigates the environmental impact, reduces city expenses, would actually increase city revenue through sales tax, and eliminates any call for the peak demand that's in their proposal. We urge you to make this, to take this request on, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Cheryl Linder, I'm sorry. Lirande? Lirande? Evening, Cheryl.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Liranda, here tonight representing Hospice of the Caneo. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city residents. It's my honor this evening to thank members of the council, past and present, for their support of our annual event, Las Vegas Cool. Las Vegas Cool will be this Saturday night at Los Robles Country Club. With the economy a bit soft, you can come out and have all the fun of Las Vegas, fun, food, showgirls, gaming tables, with simply a trip across town, a lot closer than that schlep across the desert to get you to Nevada. Best of all, the Las Vegas Cool event helps Hospice of the Caneo continue thirty-three years of service in the community. We have a commitment to being there at the most fragile moment of people's lives and that of their families, and we never have a charge for our services. We appreciate your time and that of the community. If you don't yet have your tickets to Las Vegas Cool, I've given you each a packet and our cool little coasters, which hopefully you saw at restaurants throughout town, and tickets are still available. You can get them by calling the hospice office here in Thousand Oaks at 805-495-2145, or at our webpage, which is LasVegasCool.org. I look forward to seeing you all Saturday, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Best of luck in your event. Elaine and Richard Williams? Followed by Barbara Kloster. Elaine and Richard Williams, followed by Barbara Kloster.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. We're here representing the Thousand Oaks Arts Festival, which is having its seventh annual event this weekend on Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 5:00. And I think each of the council members has been to at least one of our arts festivals. I take on the easy job, and my wife Elaine will take on the hard work. She does the heavy lifting, I do all the easy stuff. So I just want to simply say thank you to the city for your continued support to this arts festival. We can't have it without you. We provide the facility and personnel and some financing as well, so, and with your anchoring of our, our festival, we can go forward each year. We have some very interesting things this year. We have an honorary chair, who's Scott Medlock. And if you're a golfer, you've perhaps heard of him. He's a famous golfing artist. He's, he's done famous pictures of Tiger Woods and Phil Mickelson and Jack and, and Arnie. And he will be there with his art. And we also have the art of Jane Seymour, who has a past honorary chair. She's unfortunately making, for us anyway, unfortunately for her, she's making a movie back in Wisconsin, I think. And so, and those will be nice features. They'll be at The Lakes, which is also now participating with the arts festival in a very big way. And the last thing is, he's, he's donated a picture of his for a raffle. We're having a raffle as well, so we want to encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the festival, and maybe buy a ticket for this, this raffle, which includes one of his pictures, one from Jane Seymour, and an original piece of art from an artist of ours here locally called Ron Souza. So we hope you can all come to that event. Elaine?
As usual, we have something for everyone. We have over 50 local artists, and if you wonder where the artists are, come out to the arts festival and see them. It's really something to see. We have performing arts on the CRPD stage, and the, and at the Lakes stage. That Lakes stage will be a little bit further east this year, but you'll be able to find it. We have a children's art experience. We have working artists from Cal Lutheran with, and we have hands-on experience, children's art experience with activities for children of all ages. We always say that because a lot of the parents like to enjoy the art experience as well as the kids. New this year will be a youth performing troupe, the youth of Canejo Valley Shakespeare Society, and they'll be doing scenes from the bard, as well as music and song from Elizabethan times. And these kids are really great. You, you can't believe that they've only been at this for about 45 days. Will there also be a wine tasting at the lakes in the afternoons, and first time in Ventura County at the Thousand Oaks Arts Festival will be the gourmet food trucks. If you see, Google, or catch these. Do I get any of my own time? Do I just get his?
No, Elaine, because you're sharing three minutes, and if each of you had put in a card, you would each get three minutes, so please wrap up.
Well, I will wrap it up by reminding you that the city should thank us for attracting so many citizens to be able to see the hard work the city is doing on the boulevard, right in front of City Hall during the festival. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, and the best of luck in your event.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Kloster, followed by Tina Fregoli. Evening, Barbara.
Good evening, Barbara Kloster, Thousand Oaks. And tonight, I'm wearing two hats. One, I want to invite all of you to the sixth annual Day of the Horse on Saturday. I would love to have you come and speak and welcome all the equestrian and equestrian wannabes to our wonderful event. It's going to be bigger and better than ever, and it is a wonderful way to keep the equestrian lifestyle alive. I'm watching the clock. It's just, the monies that we raise with our pizza sales and our silent auction goes to support two other organizations that are nonprofit also, Ride on Therapeutic Horsemanship and California Coastal Horse Rescue. Last year, we were able to buy them each 50 bales of hay, which translates to $1,000. And this year, we're hoping to do the same, if not better. Now I'm putting on my other hat, as an equestrian advocate. 12 years ago, I was on the CRPD focus group to draw up a master plan for four quadrants of park property. As of now, only two quadrants have been completed, and they are the Caneo Creek Equestrian Dog Park and Community Garden in Caneo Creek South, which is the soccer baseball field. After a year of meetings and much discussion, the master plan was completed. This plan involves CRPD, Caneo Valley Unified School District, and the city of Thousand Oaks. The designated equestrian trail was moved to the east side of the soccer fields and the bike path to the west side. The school district was on board with the equestrians crossing school district land. The city was on board to install an equestrian light standard, and CRPD was happy with the whole master plan. 12 years later, how things have changed. The school district says the equestrian, equestrians designated trail does not have permission to go on their land. The city received money two years ago and decided to strike, construct a bike path adjacent and sometimes overlapping the equestrian trail, amending the master plan. And Caneo Park and REC saw no need to notify the equestrians of the change in time for them to put their input into these new plans. We have had meetings with CRPD and city staff, and they have agreed with all our concerns, stating they would make improvements to the existing equestrian trail for safety's sake. Unfortunately, these statements were mistruths. It is not too late to rectify these mistruths and make amends to the equestrians community. We have had our trails disappear to developers, horse-owned properties turned into tennis courts, but we are not going to give up the fight hole onto our equestrian way of life. I would hate to think that a whole year of my life was wasted while I was on the focus group. I was proud to be on it and felt that what I had to say was heard and inputted into the master plan. It was a feel-good feeling to be giving back to the community. That feel-good feeling doesn't feel so good right now. I support everything that Tina Fregoli will be presenting to you. What I'm asking is that you support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kloster. Tina Fregoli, followed by Jerry Zucka.
Hi, my name's Tina Fregoli, and as you know, a bike path is being built on the equestrian trail at Canejo Creek. The equestrian trail has been in the master plan since 1998. There are stepovers and a signal for horse crossing there. I've been riding on this trail for years, and all I ask is that safe equestrian access be maintained. A bike path is being built on our horse path, and we're being told we can go around, and really, that is okay, as long as it's functional and it's safe. I and other equestrians have spoken and met with the designer, city, and CRPD staff. We have communicated clearly about some of the unsafe design. Staff has claimed to consider our concerns, but construction has basically gone on as originally planned. I'm here tonight to make sure that the equestrians are heard. First, we ask that all horse crossings and shared parts of the trail have rough textured surface, preferably DG. This will provide better traction for the horses and a visual indicator to cyclists that they are entering a different zone. Second, we would like a split rail fence dividing the two trails. The path is designed for bikes to move quickly. The designer told me that he didn't want a narrow part of the path to provide more room for the horses, because he wanted cyclists to be able to go fast and maintain their speed at turns. And, you know, my horses are not spooky. I've ridden them in the Canejo Valley Days Parade, and they were great, but they can be startled by a fast-moving bike coming up behind it, kids on skateboards, joggers. It's, it's a different kind of scenario than the trails that we have in the hills that we share. And a fence could keep a spooking horse off the bikeway. A fence is already in the budget, and it's planned to go between the soccer field and the bikeway, in an area that ranges from about 10 to 30 feet. And we would like the fence to be put between the horse path and the bikeway, where it would provide an actual function and make the trail safer for everybody on both of the trails. And third, we would like a safe passage between the baseball field and the 23 freeway. There, there's now an area that will be paved 34 feet wide, while leaving eight feet for horses against the chain-link fence against the freeway. And bushes are going through the fence, so it really leaves about four feet for horses in a lot of the area. And I know that there's been talk about just attaching the bike path to the existing pavement, and most everybody agreed, except one staff member who seemed to be able to make an executive decision on the issue. But just attaching this bike path to the existing pavement would give safe access for bikes and horses. There'd be less pavement, and there would be less maintenance, because they wouldn't have to trim. So, please help us to ensure that the very simple design changes are made, so that everyone can enjoy these trails safely. This is really an opportunity we have right now to do the right thing, so please adjust the design and avoid serious accidents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry Zucka, followed by Jim Ashley.
Hello.
Good evening, sir.
What?
Good evening.
Good evening. And my name's Jerry Zucka, I live at 720 Rancho Road. I don't know if we had to say that. So it's, again, about this bike path that's being put in. It's called, you just said that it's a bike path, but it isn't a bike path. It's also multiple-use. Equestrians, people are going to walk, people are going to run, and it's not going to be like most other multi-use paths that we have in the city, up in the hills, where mountain bikers know what to do when they come up on a horse, and people know what to do. In this case, around that soccer field, there's going to be little kids, really young little kids. We just taught our three-year-old to ride a bike on that, on that path, in the parkway. And that's what it's going to be, and right next to it, as if you do it the way it's planned right now, we're going to have these 1,200-pound horses right next to them. And kids get excited when they see a horse, and they run up to them. And that's just, just a dangerous situation, and from what I've heard from feedback, they're not willing to move that fence and put something in between the horse path and the bike path. It's just such a dangerous situation, and I just can't believe it's going to go on. If you look at every horse path that's near a pedestrian walk, there is a split-level fence in Thousand Oaks. If you look at the excellent bike path between Ventura and Ojai, there is the wonderful bike path, split-level fence, and the horse path, because it's dangerous. And what, I don't know why, but what, what I think has happened is there's been a shortcut of the normal design process. Last week, Parks and REC actually approved this design, two months after it had already started being built. So there's obviously, something went wrong here, and we want it fixed before the pavement goes in, and there's nothing we can do about it. And really, I'm not talking solely as, as, as an equestrian, because we will be taking our three-year-old there, and I'll be riding around with him. And I like the bike path, I just want it to be safe. So, I don't know how to make, make these, get these changes to really be done. So, I'd like you guys to get involved and somehow either put it on the agenda, or make sure that, 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 that all these issues get resolved, rather than what we've been hearing is a lot of, yeah, we're going to take care of it, assurances, reassurances, and that is great, but when we see that really the design pretty much is going the way it, it was designed, then we're left with a sense of, uh-oh, things aren't going to change, and then we'll have the bike path as it is, and we'll have this dangerous situation. So please, if you could get involved and make sure these changes are made, so it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Ashley, followed by Debbie Gregory. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jim Isalee, and I'm a resident of the Enclave Community, just west of the 23 freeway at the northernmost edge of Thousand Oaks. First, I'd like to also like Chuck Cronin before me, thank you, the city, for your continued support opposing the SCE Presidential Substation Project. Unfortunately, SCE continues to force this project still, moving forward, and I hope you all remained highly engaged with us in our opposition. I would greatly appreciate that. I'm here tonight for a new concern that really just came to my attention fairly recently. It's, I'm referring to the Waste Management Landfill Expansion Plan in Simi Valley. First off, I'm completely in favor of the landfill. I think it's necessary, it's good for the city, it's good for the county. What I'm enormously fearful of is the increased truck traffic on the 23 freeway. Our homes are really just a stone's throw away from the 23 freeway. Right now, we're at threshold noise limits. There's been a significant increase in noise since the freeway expansion, since the 23 expansion. Now with the proposed tripling of truck traffic by Waste Management, the noise will be unbearable. My request is that the city requests that Waste Management, the county, or other beneficiaries of this expansion take this into consideration, the noise, and they take it into their plans and build in some kind of sound mitigation, such as a sound wall. Right now, we're really the only community in Thousand Oaks up against a freeway that doesn't have a sound wall, and I think it would be the right thing for them to do, considering how much money they gain to make from this expansion. Thank you very much, and I hope you will agree with me and help us support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ashley. Debbie Gregory, followed by Gaston Monest. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Debbie Gregory, and I'm here representing MilitaryConnection.com, I'm the CEO, and the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. Saturday, September 11th, is the fifth anniversary of 9/11, the most horrific attack on our nation, and our community, Military Connection, has been joining forces with the Reagan Library for five years to present the, produce the 9/11 Freedom Walk. So I want to invite all of you, the community, the residents of Thousand Oaks and Ventura County, to attend this event. It'll begin at 5 o'clock at the Reagan Library Courtyard, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about the program. We will have Commander James McEw, who is the commander of Naval Base Ventura, and Jim is a wonderful leader, who will be representing the military. We will have Gary Sinise, representing the Gary Sinise Foundation. Gary works tirelessly to support those who serve, and he's kind of, in my opinion, and that of many others, the Bob Hope of our time, so we're very happy to have him. And then our third speaker is Scott Strauss. Scott was with the New York City Police Department on 9/11, and he was instrumental in providing rescue work and saved the lives of two Port Authority officers, Will Hemento and John Malachlan, who were saved on September 11th by Will's efforts. And Will and his team were featured in Oliver Stone's movie, World Trade Center, so he'll be speaking, representing first responders. The walk begins shortly after the program. It's a 1.8-mile walk from the Reagan Library Courtyard, and it concludes at Rancho Madero Community Park, which is off of Wood Ranch Parkway. We'll be serving light refreshments, and we will have music by the Air National Guard Band of the Southwest. If you haven't heard them, they're incredible. I'd like to also tell you that For the Troops, which is a local charity, is going to be collecting items for soldiers that are deployed in Afghanistan and Iraq, and they'll be collecting all month, from September 1st through the 30th, at the Reagan Library. You can make donations, and some of the items would be unwrapped in original packaging, trail mix, peanuts, gum, hard candy, beef jerky, snacks that aren't, that are not heat-sensitive, double-A batteries, packets of lemonade or Crystal Light, water bottles, CDs, DVDs, juice videos, stationary prepaid phone call card stamps, and miniature hygiene items. They'll also accept cash or checks for postage to help them. I also want to thank our sponsors. I'd like to thank Jerry Feldman and Pride America, who is the major sponsor of the event, and all the people that come together to make this happen. And I'd like to say on a personal note, this was a horrific day, but being able to come together as a community, regardless of what you believe, your philosophies, and remembering, we live in the greatest nation in the world, and we're all in this together, and it's just a very heart-wrenching day to spend, and spend together with the community. So I invite everyone to attend the 9/11 Freedom Walk.
Thank you. I was just going to ask you, did you provide, could, if you would like, to provide that information to City Manager's Office, we could get it on the website?
Okay, and can I say one more thing I forgot?
Sure.
The first 1,000 people that register for the Freedom Walk will receive flags and T-shirts, and you can register at Reagan, ReaganLibrary.com, and you go to Events, or right on the homepage of MilitaryConnection.com, either site.
Okay, if you, if you, and again, to make sure that anyone that may have missed that because of the time, if you want to get that information to the City Manager's Office tomorrow morning, or, what do you want, City Manager's?
I can give you the media advisory right now. Thank you very much for the offer.
If you have it, Ms. Hong, the Assistant City Manager, could take it now, and we'll, we'll get it on there.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Gaston Monsat, followed by Shirley Thorne.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Gaston Mona, and I live along the 23 freeway on the enclave on Reed Road. I want to discuss the expansion of the landfill in Simi Valley. This expansion is expected to triple the early morning waste management truck traffic on Route 23. Residents of Route 23 have been caught in catch 22 in that our homes were built after the approval to widen Route 23, and Caltrans says that widening the 118 does not affect the traffic on Route 23. Sound measurement by Caltrans and others showed that the noise level is very close or exceeds the threshold of 67 decibel at this time. The one reading obtained by Caltrans exceeded the level but was eliminated as they felt it was background noise. The tripling of the waste truck will have substantial noise in the critical time period of 6:30 to 7:30 in the morning, and we feel it will exceed the levels consistently. The current IR does not address this issue. No measurements have been made, and this decision was done before the expansion of Route 23. The focus has been that the area surrounding the landfill is going to be, get the more noise. However, we will be directly affected, seeing that we are the only area along 23 that does not have a sound wall. So the future truck, of the waste management, is going to exceed three times of the present number of trucks going by in the morning, especially in the morning because they all leave between 6:30 and 7:30. And I can tell you that since the widening of the 23 freeway, the noise at my house is more than double. We would, considering that we only, the only section of Route 23 housing that doesn't have approval for a sound wall, we asked the City Council, request staff to, A, ask that the area between Reed Road and Olson on the west side be studied for the current noise level; B, ask for data on current and future truck traffic trips along Route 23; C, that we ask that the same area be studied to determine the impact of the increase in traffic; and we ask that the sound wall be funded by waste management or the county because both whose funds will be doubled by the expansion of the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Thorne, followed by our last speaker, Jennifer Crandall.
Good evening, Council. I'm Shirley Thorne. I live in Thousand Oaks, and we moved to this city in 1999. We moved from the valley, which a lot of people do, and we have, at that time, we had two daughters that had a love for horses. And we were very excited to choose our house in Caneo Oaks because it was one of the two areas you could own horses. I'm going back to the equestrian topic we run. It was one of the two areas you could own horses, and our lot that we purchased was zoned for two, and we're really excited about it. I got very involved as a mother, looking at what the future held for the equestrians, looking at that equestrian center that they were going to develop at that time on the opposite side of the freeway. And the only way to get there from Caneo Oaks is for my daughter to hop on her horse and ride through the soccer fields. At that time, it was just a mess. She just kind of went wherever, and she had to cross under the freeway and all. But I guess why I'm here to support, from a mother's point of view, with these kids that are riding their backyard horses, because we have a lot in our neighborhood. The way to get to the facility, if you don't own a trailer and you're not a huge equestrian, is your kids jump on their horses and they ride through the soccer fields, and they have to cross under that freeway. So I'm just asking you at this time to please work with the equestrians. I'm not, you know, that up on equestrian stuff, but, but we do have horses and we do have children, and they want to ride, and that is the place they go from Caneo Oaks, where a lot of people have bought backyard horses. So it always seems like the horse stuff, whenever I get involved and learn a little more, stuff gets cut out when it comes to the horses, and that's part of the reason we moved to Thousand Oaks. We felt like we were leaving the big city, coming to an area where they still respected equestrian, and I, and I still to this day can't see a link on the Thousand Oaks website to the ETI facilities or information or trails for equestrians. And I've asked for that years ago. It would be a great plus if maybe you linked them besides the parks and recreation. So thank you for your time. I hope you include the equestrians in the safety issues in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Crandall, followed by Nick Kidway.
I live on Reed Road, where they're trying to build the transmission lines, and I don't have a prepared talk, but I do have some pictures to show you to help, help me, help This is a view of the southern border of Thousand Oaks. This is your city, and it's a really beautiful little valley here. And if you go down the street a couple blocks to where the post office is, you'll see the gas station, or, excuse me, the car wash. In front of the car wash, they have a huge transmission, transmission pole, and that's what they're trying to build in front of my house. And this is a picture of the front of my house. They can see this, right? And that pole that they're trying to put in is going to be within 100 feet of my front door. So next time you're going down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, ask yourself, would you like them to put one of those poles 100 feet from your front door? I've spent over $150,000 in real estate taxes since I've lived here in nine years, and I really hope the council will help protect me as a property owner because this will totally kill my property value and the one of the pleasures of living on this street. This is a view of Reed Road, where they're trying to build this line. There's not even a shoulder for the bicyclist, but yet it is a bike road, and some of you might be cyclists, and you might be driving, riding down that road. I don't see how they're going to be able to have these poles safely there with the bicyclist anyway. And the other thing to show you is, this is 101. This is the BMW dealership, and this is the pole they're trying to put in front of my house and down our beautiful way. These poles won't even serve the city of Thousand Oaks. This energy is for Simi Valley, and the last studies they've done for the energy needs for these towers, they've shown that there's a 5% decrease in demand two consecutive years, and the SCE won't even give us the information for last year because that's the only way they make money, is to build these subtransmission stations. That's their way of building a profit, and they are a business. So I urge you to help us put this all on hold because there's not even proof that we need this kind of energy, and it's definitely going to destroy the beauty of our, our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crandall. Our final speaker under public comment, Mr. Nick Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, and Dr. Glancy, last time I checked, still director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. First of all, I do not commend you for the seven-week hiatus. While you were gone, we were told about the shenanigans in Belle, and more recently, what's happening in Oxnard. Some of us would really wish, because the light of sunshine on high taxes and incomes and tax waste should really fall on Thousand Oaks. The city manager, we've come to find out, is making around $380,000, and that is supposed to be the total income, but I don't, we don't, I don't believe it. It's probably a little bit more than that, and we were told for years that city council people work on a poverty stipend of 15, 16, 17,000, and now we find out it's about $55,000, not shabby for a part-time job. Yet the, you don't have to be a land use attorney or somebody really bright to see what's wrong with the city. I mean, the ACON on Thursday came out that, well, the city council is going to meet again, and this agenda will be on the website. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, four days, there was no mention of the council meeting on the, on the city council website. And this is not the first time. This happens all the time. Simple little thing, I mean, there were kids over here, I mean, you reserve the whole second row for them. There's a rope there. It says reserved. After they leave, why not make the citizens feel welcome and sit on the VIP chairs that we are paying the taxes for? Simple things like these are not done by highly-paid city workers, and that's why we do not have confidence in the government. In fact, I just came over here and listening to NPR, and they said, well, they are trying to make sure that government is not a four-letter word. I mean, why not have, you're going to have an ad hoc committee for the senior citizens later on, have an ad hoc committee to solve the problems of the website, of different people from the, from our citizens, so that we get the biggest bang for our buck, rather than like the mayor saying, oh, military, we'll incorporate you in. I mean, there has to be a system and method. This is not the way to run, run a city. And finally, we have an election. There are 10 people that are challenging the incumbents. There's no way that any incumbent will be able to unseat the incumbents unless some of these people voluntarily step down. I appeal to them, none of them have come over here to voice their opinions, that they should really think seriously and have a united front, and we should have three or maybe four candidates, then there's a chance to make some changes. Otherwise, we will have the same dark ages in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That concludes our public comments section for this evening. Because of the variety of issues that we've had under public comment this evening, I've asked the city manager if he would move up his time to respond back on some of these things. We're going to take a couple minutes instead of waiting until later on so that some of the folks don't miss this. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, some of the items identified during public comments included the, we heard from some of the folks in the enclave neighborhood and on Reed Road regarding the Southern Conference Edison proposal for the presidential substation and the electrical lines that will feed that. We, the city received communication recently from Edison and the PUC. We've shared that with the city council. What we will do with the folks who spoke tonight is we'll have staff contact each of you, and we'll make sure we take your issues and concerns into consideration. We will want to better understand what they are, and we'll make sure that we fully communicate those to the PUC and work with Edison. We did have some success, in part, actually, in large part due to these residents bringing issues to our attention before, and that Edison has agreed to underground the utilities as they cross the 23 freeway, so we won't have unsightly poles going over the freeway. So that was a victory of sorts, and they did realign the route a little bit. Obviously, the concerns of the residents you heard tonight have not been fully addressed, but we will continue to work with them and be an advocate for them and for the other residents of the community. So we will follow up with each of you who spoke tonight. We have your contact information. It'll probably be marked town or someone else from community development that follows up, but we'll, we'll get on that. We heard from some speakers about the bike path and equestrian path going through Caneo Creek Park. This project's been in the works for a while. Many of these speakers also spoke in front of the Caneo Rec and Park Board, I believe, at their last meeting or last several meetings. We have been in communication with the Park District staff on this issue, and we will follow up with the folks who did speak tonight. Do keep in mind, this is a Park District project, but the city does have a role to play, and we will go through their concerns, and we'll update council on that one. I think those were the two big concerns that we heard. There's a lot of events going on this weekend. We heard from a number of you, so we'll try to make a connection on, on the city website to the extent that we're able to do that. I do believe those are all the items I noted here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item seven, City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar, pleasure of the council. Mrs. Bill DeLaPina?
Thank you. I would like to move item, or separate item M, as in Mary.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Anything else?
I'd move approval for the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay. I have, let's go to item M.
Mayor, excuse me, we do have a speaker card on the consent calendar also.
Thank you. I do have a speaker card on a number of consent under items. Mr. Kidway?
Just struggling to see that my cards don't get lost or get a chance. I mean, is this a public meeting, or is this just a meeting of the seven people on the days that a speaker card is considered an intrusion or something like that? That's the way it comes across from the, on the other side. Number, and you only allow three minutes for the whole consent calendar, so ticking off number of items doesn't make any difference. In fact, now you don't even remove the items from the consent if a citizen makes a comment. It's only if a council member does that. I would appeal, I mean, our wonderful district attorney and grand jury are taking action against the city of Oxnard. I mean, when are they going to come and take care of Thousand Oaks? I mean, we are over the hill. We are too far away. I mean, number K, change order number two on slurry seal. I mean, I spoke before the so-called hiatus. In May, my, my home and my whole tract was supposed to have the streets redone. This was from 2003 originally, when Mayor Claudia DeLaPina had promised us that. And lo and behold, without even notifying the city council or anything, that has been moved six months or even a year. Who knows? I mean, these things are supposed, this is a government agency that you are running. This is not a club, honorable council members. I mean, that's why, I mean, every agency, including this one, when I used to come over here, there would be five or six copies of the minutes, so that's number A. Number B, the minutes. You don't provide any minutes over here, so people are sitting over here just looking. I mean, if they're bored, they can't understand my accent. They can read the minutes and see what, what the council meetings are all about. Number G, this is over a million dollars that's being spent on the stimulus funds. I mean, this needs to be advertised. People think there's no stimulus funds being, being, being spent or used, and that it's just a waste of money. This does not belong on a voice vote. This belongs on a report. And then I would like to speak about H, and if, if TO TV will help me like they helped the other lady, that's the automall sign. I know I may be unfair because this is not the one that has been approved, and I appreciate that you have the schedule in your green packet of the hearings on the automall changes. And I believe in October, this will be coming before the planning commission, and I'm very concerned, and so should be other citizens, that this will be sneaked in without due deliberation as it was done in this, in the, in the committee meeting, because I want to be on the record and let the council know that I was on the committee, and the committee was the most unfair, biased meeting that we've ever had. They did not have them at the time so that, that citizens could participate. Less than half the people came, and this city should be ashamed to be running these kind of things. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Item M, Mrs. Bill DeLaPina has asked for comment, or clarification on M. Who's?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number M, for housekeeping purposes, because I did vote against the ordinance, I will not vote for it in this consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, fine. Thank you. And I have a motion for the, well, the rest of the consent calendar. Mr. Fox, you want to include M now?
I'm going to move for M also.
Okay. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPina's voted no. Is that on the entire consent calendar or just M?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was just on M?
Let me, let me go back and rephrase that. I apologize. I should have broken that. Let me go back and rephrase that, I apologize, I should have broken that up. Let me do the consent calendar with the exception of item M. We'll take it in two separate motions, so if I could, please, the consent calendar with the exception of item M, is that all right with Mr. Fox? Comments to that motion? All right, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Fine, now we'll go to item M. We have a motion for approval, comment to the motion? There being none, please vote.
That motion carries 4-1, and I'll read the ordinance title, and ordinance amending section 9-10.102 and subsections 9-10.203A, 9-10.301A, 9-10.302A, 9-10.401A, 9-10.602B1 of the municipal code, adding appropriate references to extremely low-income category and affordable housing ordinance.
Item eight, public hearing, would the clerk please open the public hearing? Eight-eight.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 8A, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Property Business Improvement District Renewal and Assessment of Levy. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the city council and official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have four people who have presented speaker cards in pursuit to council standards. The speakers will have five minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawrence. Staff report, I believe that's here, is Mr. Wartek.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Before I get started, I would like to introduce a gentleman to my left, Marco Lamandri, who is president of New City America, based in San Diego, specializes in the formation of self-assessment or business improvement districts, and told me this evening that he just completed his 56th in California, so he's certainly very familiar with the process, and he'll be here tonight as a resource if needed. During the period 03-04, property owners on the Boulevard organized to create a business improvement district, as allowed by California law, in order to, among other things, fund a study and offer a specific plan for the long-term development and redevelopment of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. By the end of 2004, the process resulted in a majority of property owners, by weighted average, voting to create a bid, and the council approved its formation in January of 2005. Formation of the district five years ago and renewal of the bid tonight will allow the property owners to continue to be directly involved in the process of determining the development and redevelopment of that plan, which will occur on the properties within the district and on the city's main corridor. Since 2005, the majority of funds collected from property owners were used to assist the bid in developing a specific plan. That plan was submitted to the city late last year, and an environmental impact report is now in progress as part of the plan review process. Tonight is the culmination of the current election process. The current process began when petitions were circulated among all property owners on the Boulevard this spring, requesting of council that an election be called to renew the bid. Fifty-four and one-half percent, by weighted average, of all property owners submitted petitions in favor of calling of an election, and the council approved the calling of the election on June the 22nd. Secret ballots were then mailed to all property owners and have been returned over the last seven weeks to the city clerk up to the time of this hearing. This evening, the ballots will be opened and counted following conclusion of this hearing. Prior to the closure of the hearing, council will have the option of voting in favor of renewing the bid, voting to not renew the bid, or not to vote at all. The votes are based upon a weighted average that takes into account the size of the property, the level of its development, its frontage on the Boulevard, and its overall development. It does not, however, take into account the value of the property or its improvements. The city and the redevelopment agency collectively own 13.8% of the total of the properties within the existing bid by weighted average. Staff believes that renewal of the bid at this time is in the best interest of both the Boulevard property owners and the city. In the event a majority of ballots of property owners have been submitted in favor of renewing the bid, council will then be asked this evening to also adopt the resolution of intent to renew the bid. At the conclusion of this hearing regarding the election, staff from the city clerk's department will adjourn to the city clerk's office to open the sealed envelopes and count the ballots. Staff will then be available to report back to council approximately 30 to 45 minutes later. This, Mr. Mayor and council, concludes our staff report, and Mr. Lamandri and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wartek. Questions of staff?
Mr. Gillett?
Oh, yes, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Wartek. Just for the viewing public's edification, the business improvement district is essentially a request by the property owners along the Boulevard to, in a sense, tax themselves for improvements along the Boulevard. The process that's been set up in the state of California is that they have to go to their local city council to receive that permission, and then the process has been laid out as you've identified.
That is correct. These are not property taxes per se, these are self-assessments. Those funds are collected by the city and then transmitted to the district for expenditure as they see fit within the ambit of the law.
And do you know offhand approximately how many cities in the state of California have bids, active bids in place?
I'll let Mr. Lamandri respond to the state question, but within Ventura County, the cities of Ventura and Oxnard also have them.
I can tell you, councilman, that, for example, the city of LA has 35, San Diego has 18, San Francisco has 11, Oakland has nine, there's no central database, but it's estimated by the California Downtown Association, there's well over 300 statewide.
And of those cities, if you know, do they have property that is owned by the city, and do they participate in the election process as well?
The city of Oakland, since I've done many districts and nearly all the districts I've done, the city is a significant property owner, and they do vote. The city of Oakland and downtown Oakland, the Lake Merritt recently passed, two years ago, the city was at least 12 to 15%. Fisherman's Wharf, which I did about four years ago, the city was around 15%. Many cities own large tracts of land in these commercial districts, so it's not uncommon to have the city be a major property owner, or a redevelopment agency, or a utility to be a major property owner within those commercial areas.
Mr. Fox, in addition, and the city of Oxnard did vote its opportunity to support its bid that was formed earlier this year.
The number of parcels that participate in the vote, is there any ways, because we've heard testimony before, that there's a number of property owners that are, for lack of a better description, absentee landlords? They don't live in the city, they live, in many cases, out of state. Do we have any sense of how many of those participate in the vote?
Well, we know under the 1994 Act that you have a pretty high threshold just to get to the balloting, the petition requires that at least 50% of the weighted property owners sign a petition. Do we know how much in this district are absentee? No, I could not tell you that. But traditionally, in the state of California, to have a 30 to 40% non-response rate of property owners is not uncommon.
And what was our response rate again?
About 54% of the weighted property owners signed a petition in support, and I think around 31% did not respond. In addition, as part of the petition process, we are not required to put a yes or a no on the petition, we're only required to demonstrate support, but we do both to give the property owners an opportunity to weigh in at the petition phase and the balloting phase.
So what percentage of the property owners simply did not respond? Sounds to me like it's somewhere in the 30% range?
Around 31% of the weighted property owners.
So I think it's important distinction that those property owners didn't vote no, they just didn't respond at all.
Correct.
All right, okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Additional questions of staff? We'll move on to the public comments on the item. I have four speakers and one statement card, which I've passed for all council members to review the statement card. The first speaker, Mr. Rick Principi, Mr. Principi? And he will be followed by Mr. Nick Kidway. Evening, Mr. Principi.
Rick Principi, I'm current chairman of the Thousand Oaks Business Improvement District. Just a little bit about the district, we're 230 approximate properties, and we range from Duesenberg to the west, to just beyond Moore Park Road, I believe it's called Caneo Road if I'm not mistaken. So we're the 230 property owners, and the whole purpose of the Building Improvement District for the property owners was to create a fund where we could come up with a specific plan and design the redevelopment for our particular area. And we decided to self-assess ourselves for these funds, and to give you an idea, it averages out about $465 a year per property owner. It's a very insignificant amount compared to the value of the property, but we felt it was the best vehicle and tool we had to be able to pull our resources together to come up with these type of plans and work we've been doing, and it's been very beneficial for everybody involved. I think it's also important that you're aware that this is strictly an extension of an existing building improvement district that's already there. There's no new taxes, there's no new increases, we're keeping everything the same, we're just extending it to be able to do all the other things that we want to do. And we certainly are in agreement with staff in recommending that this is improved, and we hope you'll do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Principi. I should have asked the city clerk at the beginning, with four speakers, the amount of time each speaker has, please.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you very much, Mr. Principi. Our second speaker, Mr. Nick Kidway, Mr. Kidway?
Nick Igbalkidway, representing concerned citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, distinguished counsel. This is a hearing of the Redevelopment Agency Board, and the city lacks transparency to show that. This kind of bringing together business owners together is kind of the antithesis of capitalism and cries of cronyism and cartelization that tends to raise prices, which is basically what is the goal of the Redevelopment Agency on the Boulevard and the bid, is to increase rents, which in turn causes bankruptcies, businesses to go out of business, and higher prices. It's also a shame that 30 to 40% of our responsible property owners do not participate in the process, and by their sleeping at the switch, we have these decadent activities going on in our society. I would like TO TV to show the overhead that I have, because Moore Park Road also is part of the bid. This is the Office Mac store, which was redeveloped, and one of my favorite stores, it's closing on the 25th of this month. I saw that sign and I immediately, a bulb came on my mind, because they're only closing Thousand Oaks and Oxnard and Northridge will remain open. So I went back again to take the picture, and I talked to just a clerk even, and I said, "What happened? I mean, you're not making enough money?" He said, "No, from what I hear, the rents in Oxnard are about half in Thousand Oaks." That's the problem. In fact, our own success is killing our people. And what you call blighted buildings, the old buildings that are on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, those are the only buildings where mom and pop, local residents, can put up shop versus corporate chains. In fact, you know, I may have an accent, but I've been here long enough. I mean, the Oaks Mall, when it opened, the anchor chains brought in the people who went to shop at the local stores, which were all family-owned, and now not even one is, it's all corporate. I'm all for free enterprise, and I don't want you interfering, but when you subsidize with our tax dollars into the tune of millions of dollars, take our property taxes, which are the business taxes, and give them, like, free money to special interest businesses, I mean, people should really be up in arms, and, you know, right now, it's not in the front pages, but believe me, I mean, six months, a year, two years from now, this redevelopment agency mess will come to bite us, and then people will say, "Where were you?", and some of you will be retired. But you should really be ashamed of yourself to support such kind of shenanigans, and to see that businesses are going under, because this bid is not about the $100,000. The $100,000 is to harness the redevelopment agency's $20 million that the project gets, so that it can be used. And it's just a few business people that are trying to increase the rents, most of the people, and they own several properties. That's what is the bottom line, it's not really talked about, and they have a right to do it, but you have a right to oppose that, and look out for the average, for the interest of the average homeowner, average resident. What are redevelopment agency taxes? I mean, people think that's, I've never met anybody that wrote a check that said redevelopment agency. These are the business taxes. And what are business taxes? Business property taxes? These are the taxes that go to 28 taxing agencies, the fire department, the school district, the community college district. You have no opposition, because you have signed deals so that they get a pass-through, but who is losing out? The state of California, and the state of California is doing wonderfully right. Five and a half billion dollars is lost to these redevelopment agencies every year, five and a half billion dollars, and you folks just consider it free money, and nobody wants, there's no champion here like Chris Norby, my hero, Assemblyman from Fullerton, who's fighting these, he's in the assembly now, he was a Fullerton councilman who successfully fought against this tax waste. In fact, at our meeting in San Francisco two years ago, there was a fire chief that spoke, because the redevelopment agency near Sacramento had declared the raw land to be blighted, and they didn't have money to run the fire department. Mr. Fox, please, do the right thing, I know you are good people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rick Lemo? And our final speaker will be Mr. Lloyd Werkhammer.
Good evening, Mayor and council, city staff. My name is Rick Lemo, I live in Newbury Park, and I'm actually here speaking on behalf of two different organizations tonight. First, speaking as president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, and I'm amending my comments because, after hearing some of the public comments and one of the speakers this evening, I really have to apologize that the facts are being so distorted. 97% of the citizens in this city have responded that they like the job our current city council is doing. So the absolutely ridiculous comparisons to Bell, or Oxnard, or any other cities that may be going through changes are grossly unfair, not only to our council, but more importantly to our city staff, and so I'd rather be on record first using up some of my time to fix that. In regards to the last speaker's comment about this being about raising rents, that's not the case at all, but I can guarantee you this, if improvements are not made to the Boulevard, and we don't continue on the path that we've been, we will eventually get to the lowest rents in California, or all of America. And then anybody who wants to open up any kind of business can do it, but no one will be coming here. It's not about raising rents, it's about improving the environment and following something that's really amazing that's happened here. The city council, one of the city council goals is perfectly in line with what was one of the most important requests of the citizens on the Attitude Survey. Now, that means that your goals are focused properly, and this is one way to do it. I would also like to address the comment about the 70% participation. I don't know that any of us in our lifetime have ever seen 70% participation by an electorate in a vote, ever, in the United States. We did see it once, and I think it was only once, the first time the Iraqi people got to vote, and everybody turned out. But we have not seen 70% of the electorate, in fact, I don't know that in the 25 years I've been here, 70% of the citizens of Thousand Oaks turned out to vote. I'd also like to clarify what the general group of, description of the group of the 30% 30 percent that don't respond. They're usually real estate investment trusts and syndicates, that frankly, they don't vote yes, they don't vote no, they just don't vote. They probably don't even get to the ballot until a month or two after the election has taken place. I think it is really also wrong to refer to this as a tax. No offense to you or any other elected official, but a tax is something that happens to us when you folks decide you need money for a certain purpose. This is not a tax. This is an assessment where we decide to assess ourselves, and you have no control over that money. Now, I happen to be one that trusts our city council, but what really warms my heart is the state of California has no control over this money either. So, when they get in trouble, they can't get to our bid money, and our improvements go forward on the Boulevard, and the quality of life remains the focus on the Boulevard. I want to thank the city staff and council for the advice, help, direction, and criticism of the business community over the past year, as we were, you know, cobbling our specific plan, and getting that put together, and funding that ourselves through this bid. Tonight, I speak first as President of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, urging you to take the lead and support the renewal of the bid as recommended by staff. It's the right thing to do, and it sends the wrong message to all of us as business owners if, as an owner of land on the Boulevard, you don't vote for it. Last but not least, and I'm moving as quickly as I can, because I guess we don't give organizations 15 minutes anymore, but if you could pass these out, I'm delivering a letter to you from a company I work for by the name of Caruso Affiliated. And this letter is to say that if you choose not to vote in support of the bid, we would ask at Caruso Affiliated that you do vote in the affirmative for the Lakes property, because we pay those taxes anyway, or those assessments. So, we're asking you to make certain that if you do not vote your share, that you at least vote the Lakes' share, because we are in writing and right now on the record telling you that we are prepared to cover that. With that being said, I think it's important for you to know that there are a laundry list of things that have yet to come. Take a look at what we've just started with our new website, question-and-answer cards that are going to be passed out to the community, and public speaking to bring people up to speed. We've done a lot of work, there's a lot of work yet to come. Thank you very much, and I hope you'll support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Lemo.
Thank you.
And our final speaker, Mr. Lloyd Wertheimer. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd Wertheimer, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and also the Vice President of Toba, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. And I've come up here to ask that you support what the staff has recommended, and go forth with the program that not only the board members have supported, but the property owners on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and the city itself, and all of the researches that we've done to get the feedback from our city and the people that live here. I think it'll be a great improvement for the Boulevard that will seed through generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. That concludes our public speakers on this public hearing. Staff response, anything?
I would add, one of the speakers made reference to Moore Park Road being in the Business Improvement District, that is in fact not the case. It goes up only one block, so the businesses referred to in that dialogue were not part of the bid.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Irwin. Pardon?
Is it time for questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. I had a question, I don't know if it's, who can answer this, maybe the city attorney. We just got the letter from Caruso Affiliated. So, I just want to confirm, they pay all taxes on that parcel, on the Lakes parcel? And special assessments?
I know that they do pay the property taxes, I cannot tell you definitively that they would pay this type of assessment. I can't tell you that without looking at the documents, I'm sorry. I know they do take, unless Ms. Hong knows, and I'm not sure she does either.
Mr. Wortek, do you have anything you can add to this conversation? We understand that at the Lakes, because of the partnership agreement with the city owning the land, and private development having the facilities and what have you, looking at the, Mr. Mitnick, do you know?
We have it in writing, they'll pay.
Yes.
So...
It's part of the pass-through, that includes the property taxes.
But the special assessment to the bid over the last five years has been paid by Caruso.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, can this be, can something like what they're suggesting be done, where you split Caruso off from the rest of the city properties?
We could look at what parcel numbers those would be, that is a possibility, if that's what the council so chose, but we would have to look at our ballots, and you would be only voting for that part. So, if that's something you wanted to do, then we would have to split that out.
All right, thank you.
Does that help you, Mrs. Irwin? Okay. Dr. Clancy, did you have anything? Do you have anything? Ms. Bildeloppen?
Well, that's basically a follow-up, to see what the percentage would be, and also a confirmation, as well as assurance, that the city, the taxpayers, wouldn't be footing the $13,000 bill per year as their share of participating in this bid.
Well, as we sit here tonight, as Mrs. Albano referenced as well, we're not sure what the breakout is percentage-wise, but in the staff report, it is noted that the city and the Redevelopment Agency does have a share of the overall assessment, and it totals about $18,000. That's outlined in the staff report.
You say it is $18,000, not $13,000, then?
$13,000 plus relates to the city property, then the RDA picks up the balance.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for clarification, you have two components. You have a city general fund component, and you have a Redevelopment Agency component. On the Redevelopment Agency component, for all the properties, not just the Lakes, it's important to recognize that general taxpayers don't pay that. That comes from the property tax increment paid by the businesses themselves. So, as far as the general taxpayer involvement, that would be for the general fund piece, or pieces only. Thank you.
Okay, okay. All right. Any further questions of staff? Being none? All right, this is the requirement for the council to take action by motion regarding recommendation number one, A, B, or C, regarding whether to cast a ballot, city slash Redevelopment Agency property, and if so, how. The three options are in the, on the agenda, and in the staff report. Pleasure of the council. Mr. Fox?
I'm going to move that we vote in favor of renewing the bid. It's my view, five years ago, that the council wanted to ensure that there was a majority of property owners that were in support of this process. And at that time, out of an abundance of wanting to make sure that there was in fact a majority, the city did not participate. We are now five years down the road, I think the economy has dramatically changed, and based on the information that the council has received during that period of time, and the performance of the bid, it seems appropriate now that we are partners with the Boulevard business owners. I think it's important, both from a, from a standpoint of improvement along the Boulevard, as well as a symbolic gesture with respect to supporting our small businesses along the Boulevard in a very, very tough economic time. If this city has any hope of a facelift along the Boulevard, the Business Improvement District certainly would be a vehicle to that end. As been pointed out by both staff and the staff report, suggesting that this is taxpayer dollars is a complete misrepresentation. Suggesting that this is a tax on property owners, again, a misrepresentation. This is an assessment by the property owners on themselves for improvement that they choose to make along the Boulevard, and it goes hand-in-hand with, as it's been stated from speakers, the Attitude Survey, which identifies the improvement of Thousand Oaks Boulevard as one of the top priorities in the city. It's also one of the top priorities of the city council. So, everything seems to be in alignment, and it just makes, I think, good sense, and candidly, in a time when our economy is faltering, I think local government needs to demonstrate some degree of leadership in stepping forward and partnering in a real and measurable way with the small businesses that provide the tax base for our community. So, I think we need to participate and vote in favor.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Irwin?
I don't disagree with most of what Councilmember Fox has said, but I think one of the beauties of the bid was that it was the business owners deciding whether they wanted to tax themselves, and we are going to partner with them, because we are going to pay our share, but I don't think it is appropriate for government to step in and make the deciding bid. So, I would, I'm going to look at recommendation one C, unless we can break out, I mean, I think that the suggestion by Mr. Lemo, I could go along with that one, it might not be necessarily necessary, maybe there are the votes to vote in favor already, but I could consider breaking out the Lakes, considering they pay the assessment, and let them vote in favor of the bid.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't here for the Donnybrook five years ago, but I understand it was a bone of contention. However, I'm very much in favor of Mr. Fox's motion. I think it's most appropriate that we act as though we're a true partner to this outfit, so it has my support.
Thank you. Mrs. Bildeloppen?
Thank you. When this item came before us before our summer break, the city's vote was needed in order to put the Business Improvement District vote to a vote. Without our participation, this election, so to speak, would not be taking place tonight, or would have not taken place. I did vote against that, because I didn't see why government should play such a major role in determining whether a bid should take place or not. Tonight, after the votes are counted, of course, the outcome will most likely be favorable, I would imagine, but the fact that other cities in California have Business Improvement Districts doesn't mean that's necessarily a very good idea for Thousand Oaks. The cities mentioned are major cities with major high-density developments, Oakland, San Francisco, San Diego. Thousand Oaks is really not in that realm, we are much too small. And regarding the city Attitude Survey, the city Attitude Survey did state that residents were in favor of beautifying the Boulevard. I don't know whether including or considering high-density projects was part of that equation when the resident answered that question, that Thousand Oaks Boulevard should be beautified. I do think that the bid is a good idea, and I do think it is wonderful that businesses have indeed agreed, or some businesses have agreed, to assess themselves, because it will help the local economy. But to have the city pay from the general fund, which is taxpayer dollars in excess of $13,000 per year, I don't see the wisdom in doing that. I am disappointed with the lack of response of these other property owners who are, who didn't bother to vote. It would have been wonderful if we had had their input, one way or another. I guess it must be very difficult to get a hold of them, why, I don't know. Having said that, I am not in favor of the motion, and I much rather prefer item number one C.
Thank you. A point of clarification from staff, when you were clicking off, and I think it's germane to the discussion, the number of Business Improvement Districts in the state of California, I thought the number that you said was 300 and some. And if that's the case, as I was mentally adding up the number in the major cities, that would have been about 50 to 60. So, that means that 250, or whatever it is, are spread out among other cities. We're a city of 130,000. Can you enlighten me on that, Mr. Wortek?
I can tell you that I just completed a district in the city of Tracy, which has 60,000 people. There's a number of these Business Improvement Districts in many smaller towns throughout the, throughout the state. My experience has been in the larger cities, but I've also done them in Berkeley and San Jose. I'm doing one in Redwood City, which is also not a very large city. So, yes, the concentration is probably, I would estimate somewhere around 20 to 25 percent are in the large cities. And as Mr. Wortek had stated, there is one recently formed in Oxnard, as well as Ventura.
Okay, thank you, that helps. And I, whether we like it or not, we are, as a general law city, we are very, very dependent on sales tax dollars. And unfortunately, oftentimes, residents, when they write that property tax check in the fall, I think that is their taxes. If they write their personal income tax in April, those are their taxes. What a lot of people don't remember, or don't realize, is that the general fund of a city of this type is primarily financed by sales tax, and those are the big-ticket items, police, libraries, those services that come from sales tax dollars. And with that thought in mind, two other things come to mind. One, it was referenced, there was reference made to the Attitude Survey that's sent out every five years to all of our, to a number of our residents. And without hesitation, the overwhelming response is a sentiment on the part of the responding citizens, and in discussions to improve, enhance, upgrade Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Folks don't want to go to the Valley, they want to shop here, and we've been very successful with that. Then, the final point was that this city, in its 47-year history, has conducted any number of surveys, studies, reports, discussions, and the shelf is stacked with these reports. This was the first time that the most affected aspect of the business community, the merchant owners, property owners themselves, took a role in saying, "Wait a minute, the city's done it for 40-plus years, we want to do it. We want to see what's necessary, we want to assess ourselves, and we want to develop the plan that will eventually expand, improve, et cetera, et cetera." And so, with those thoughts in mind, I'm going to support the motion. Mr. Fox, maker of the motion?
Normally, I don't comment after a motion's been made, but I do want to clarify a few things. First, the Business Improvement District is a mechanism by which, again, the properties assess themselves for improvements along the Boulevard. Many of those improvements are capital improvements. The suggestion that a Business Improvement District will result in high-density development is, again, a complete distortion. I've had the opportunity, over the last week or so, to knock on several hundred doors. And one of the things I hear from residents, particularly about properties along the Boulevard, is not enough to do, not enough services along the Boulevard. And so, you know, the Business Improvement District is one, it's not the only, but it's one vehicle, a partnership between public and private agencies, entities, for the improvement along the Boulevard, which is consistent with what our residents has told us in Attitude Surveys. I want to clearly state, and I know I speak for the entire council, that the Business Improvement District in no way, in no way, is an opportunity for high-rise buildings along the Boulevard, for gross, dense projects, even for mixed use. That's an issue that has been thrown around, and has absolutely nothing to do with the Business Improvement District. It's simply an opportunity for the property owners to assess themselves, to make needed improvements, many of which are capital improvements. And that's essentially what it is. With respect to cities that participate, I think the consultant did a good job. By his testimony, 80 percent of the cities in the state of California are smaller cities, and they participate in the Business Improvement District. So, again, I think it's an issue of leadership. At the end of the day, I think our city needs to be partners with our small business owners, partners with the people... partners with the people that own property along the Boulevard, and finally, a participation rate of almost 60%, where 30% of the people are not even voting, to me, is an overwhelming, is an overwhelming majority of people that live here and own property here and see this as a good thing.
Thank you. Please vote.
The motion carries 3-2 with Councilmembers Bill De La Peña and Councilmember Irwin De Senti.
Thank you. To execute the city's, do we need to take a short recess to execute the ballot then before the counting starts?
You can continue on to other items.
Okay. Let's...
But...
I don't really talk to her. All right. At this time, I'll call for, if there are any remaining ballots, at this time, they need to be turned into the city clerk.
Including ours.
Including ours. And that will do while we're still working, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing. The city clerk or designee will conduct the tabulation of the ballots. In the city clerk department, the tabulation is open to the public if anyone wishes. Mrs. Lawrence, if you'd let anyone that wants to know where that will happen. Any member of the public would like to view the tabulation, please proceed to the city clerk department. While the ballots are being tabulated, we'll continue on the agenda items and return to this item when the tabulation is completed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just make a comment really quickly.
Yes, Ms. Bill De La Peña.
I just wanted to, as everybody files out, I just wanted to make a clarification regarding the draft for the specific plan by the Business Improvement, by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, which does include a waiver and would allow buildings up to 75 feet high. That isn't writing. That is not a distortion. That is fact.
Okay. We will move to Item 9, Department Reports. We have none. Redevelopment Agency Reports, we have none. Committee Commission Board Reports, Youth Summit Implementation Plan. Francine Sprigle, introduce. Francine, are you, where are you?
I'm over here.
There you are. There you are. Okay. All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, and Staff. Tonight, I would like to introduce Commissioners Hong and Commissioner Rose to do the implementation report for the Youth Commission.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, Councilmembers, City Manager, and Staff. I am Hannah Hong, and this is Josh Rose from the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission. We were co-chairs of the Youth Leadership Summit. We are here tonight to present the implementation plan developed by the summit subcommittee to address information obtained from youth and leader attendees. Before we start, I would like to have all the youth commissioners here tonight to stand and be recognized, as this is a group effort.
Welcome, folks.
So, as we recall, in February, the commission hosted a leadership summit with over 100 attendees to discuss teen concerns and issues. We presented these results to City Council in May, and we were directed to develop an implementation plan with solutions to those concerns. Many of the concerns were directly related to Cano Recreation and Park District, Cano Unified School District, and private businesses. Thus, many of the proposed solutions include providing the information to these agencies and, in some cases, developing partnerships. Based on the information collected, the plan includes goals and proposals in the areas of safety, health, recreation, environment, information, and continued communication. Tonight, we will discuss some of these goals and solutions. One area of concern for students is safety. One of the suggested solutions for the youth attendees was improved relations and higher visibility of police resource officers. We believe it may be helpful if the students had a better idea of why the resource officers are there. We believe that this can be accomplished through increasing officer attendance at information meetings, hosting officers at freshman nights to speak with parents, visits to student government classes or homework classes, market police resources in school newspapers, and develop resources in conjunction with the police resource centers. Bullying is an occurrence that mainly takes place on campus or before or after school. Therefore, the commission believes that making recommendations to schools and resource, police resource officers, including providing protection laws and/or complaint forms, and encouraging more discreet and safe ways to visit resource officers and counselors when there is a problem, is the most effective solution. The commission can also research off-site community resources where students can report or discuss being bullied and provide those to youth through the teen center and city websites or a resource center. Student stress has become a big issue with teens. This is not only caused by emotional and physical bullying, as we saw in the previous slide, but also by hectic schedules and demands. The commission proposes that collaborating with agencies and/or speakers knowledgeable in this area and sharing resource information in the most appropriate solution to meet this goal. Cano Coalition for Youth and Families will be hosting the first information resource meeting with experts and those involved with the students on September 30th at the teen center. The commission will also invite experts to present information at televised meetings and research other off-campus social service resources that may be available to students. A second goal in the area of health is related to eating healthier and providing health and nutritional information. On campuses, proposals to form nutritional clubs, provide healthier options, and nutritional information in cafeterias will be recommended to the school district. The commission will invite nutritional speakers to televised meetings. They will also research healthier living activities and provide that information to youth via website or a resource center. Commissioner Rose will now discuss additional goals and solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and Staff. Being green seems to be a very popular phrase these days, and our goal is to improve environmental resources through hosting environmental speakers, working with the city environmental division to develop a better program utilizing recycle bins in school clubs as fundraisers. This campaign will be most successful through marketing and involving the students directly. There is nothing to do here. We cannot tell you how many times we hear this phrase uttered out of the teens in Thousand Oaks. The commission does not completely agree that there is nothing to do in Thousand Oaks, however. In the report, we have provided information on the extensive programs provided at the teen center, and there are many more through the park district, community centers, nonprofit agencies, schools, and private businesses. As discovered in previous surveys and summits, main suggestions include a family activity center, including bowling and ice skating, and older teen nightclubs. Older teen events are regularly held at the teen center and are sold out. Older teen club-type events have been sponsored by the commission in the past and have been unsuccessful as the requirements for police presence and chaperones are too high to attract teens. Going to a city-sponsored club is not really what teens are looking for. Independent businesses have also attempted to host underage club venues, and many have been successful but discontinued for various reasons. The commission believes that the information from the summit should be provided to local businesses that may be able to develop an activity center or other activities that might meet some of the needs of city teens. The commission will accomplish this through working closely with City Economic Development Manager and Chamber of Commerce. The commission will also discuss outdoor evening concerts or DJ-type dances at local venues such as the Oaks and Janes malls. As with other goals, this will also require marketing to the target audience. Many of the youth attendees at the summit admitted they just didn't know about some of the services and events. As you have heard through all of these goals and proposals, there is one item that is constant among all of them, the need to provide information. Many attendees at the summit were surprised to find out about programs and events already provided in our community. In researching ways to provide information to the public, we discovered that the Cano Recreation and Park District, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, and the seniors had the same challenge. How do we get the word out? We met with these agencies and decided that developing a volunteer-based resource center as a collaborative effort would be more cost-effective and less labor-intensive, and we could serve all the citizens. Location considerations were the senior center, a community center, a school, the library, the teen center, and the Oaks Mall. The senior and youth representatives jointly met with Police Resource Center management and the Oaks Mall management, who were very receptive in having the Community Resource Center as part of the Police Resource Center storefront in the Oaks Mall. This location provides teen-police interaction, an intergenerational program, an off-site, discreet place teens can talk to police about bullying, and find out about stress counseling resources in a place where everyone is welcome, the mall. This term, the commission would like to begin the research and compilation of information and development of a plan to open the center. The commission will return with a report and proposal in the spring of 2011. To go forward, the commission would like to form volunteer teams to begin research and implementation of goals. Local businesses and agencies will be invited to participate in this planning. Due to the success of the Leadership Summit, the commission believes that this is a viable alternative to surveys and should be planned every two to three years based on implementation progress. In summary, the commission would like City Council to approve the implementation plan and appropriate funding for marketing and meeting supplies, including development of implementation teams to begin research center data collection, distribute summit information, and market services. We would also like to thank the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, Council on Aging, and the Police Resource Center for listening to our ideas and for their input and guidance. We would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Questions of the speakers? Mrs. Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys did an incredible job with this. You know, we mentioned before that a few of us showed up at the Youth Summit, and I was wondering how you were going to assimilate all this information, but I really like this, the implementation plan and the idea about disseminating information through the Police Resource Center. Are you still vetting that, or is that going to be implemented?
We're actually in the early development process, so we are going to collect the information. It's going to take a couple of months to do it, though. Does that answer your question?
So, you're moving forward with it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, is, what is the timeline for, you said this was, you're looking at spring of 2011 to do that. What about all these other goals that you have? What is the timeline to try and work through them over the next three years until you have another Youth Summit, or is it over the next year? What's the plan?
I'm going to go ahead and answer that for them. We're probably looking at, in the neighborhood of two to three years to take care of all of the eight goals that they have. We want to put it together in the same format that they did the Youth Master Plan, so we'll bring in additional youth, ones that had applied for the Youth Commission that are waiting to work with us. So, we'll bring them in, and we'll have an additional meeting per month, and we'll try to work on each one of those things one at a time.
Okay.
So, I would say at least two years before we can get most of them taken care of.
Oh, that's, that is fantastic. And then, the last thing, when you looked at recreational opportunities, were you able to hear the research of our city manager intern who did the report on recreational opportunities, Cornell graduate student? Well, I would suggest, as you're trying to implement them, that you make sure, not just to meet with the Economic Development Director, but he was a student at Newbury Park High School and did his master's thesis on recreational opportunities.
Actually, we've invited Akbar to come to our meetings. He's come to the last couple ones, and he's going to be here tonight. He's, yeah, he's, he came to our first meeting so he can meet all the youth, and he's really excited about working with them on the plan.
And there he is.
Talking about him.
I'm just saying, he's a great resource for you two. So, again, I commend all of you for this, and I'm looking forward to seeing you implement these objectives. Congratulations.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Bill De La Peña?
No, I'm ready to make a motion if...
Okay. I just, one, that's fine, a couple of questions. Ms. Sprigle, listening to it, and I'm very, as always, very impressed, very pleased with it, and obviously, the right direction at the right time, but I'm kind of curious, as a percentage of total intermediate and high school students in the community, what percent of the total are in private schools? Do we have that figure?
I don't off the top of my head, but I could probably get that for you.
Okay. I know that it's not a large amount, and I know there are other variables. As an example, one of the most active high schools is almost a total commuter base. They don't live in the community, they commute in, and I recognize that that would influence, but I'm just, I know that the structure of the Police Resource Program is structured towards the public high schools and the public intermediate schools, and I'm just, could you enlighten me with your discussion to be as holistic as possible in service to the entire population, including the private schools?
Well, I think that's why they're looking at putting in a resource center at the Police Resource Center at the mall. That way, that includes all of your homeschool, your private schools, and all the schools so that they have an ability to have some sort of contact or some sort of interaction with police, other than the Police Resource Centers that are at the schools.
Okay. That, the homeschool population was, I was going to get to that in a minute because that's another, and I don't know the size in relationship to the total.
We do have one youth commissioner that is from the homeschool population, and she does bring in some of her friends to, for example, to the Youth Summit. They did come.
Okay. Do we have any commissioners now that represent any of the private high schools?
We have one commissioner from Lorena.
From Lorena?
Mm-hmm.
The Adventist Academy or none of those?
No, I don't think we had any applications at all, but they are sent applications every year when it opens.
Okay. Without belaboring that, that's a population that I want to, I want to make certain that it becomes a served population. I don't know, I don't know how large it is, and, but I know that we have some very active private schools in this community, and I want to make sure that these resources, that you have the resources you need, first of all, but that your resource base spreads out over the entire needed-to-be-served population is where I was going with that. Yes?
Each one of the youth commissioners also is a liaison to each one of the schools, and they do work as liaisons to all of the private and homeschool organizations as well.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. You guys are doing a great job. Really are. Okay. Pleasure to the council. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Thank you. I would, I want to congratulate you as well for being so extremely active and in doing the things and setting the goals that you want to set for your generation, and I'm very pleased to make a motion to approve the recommendation with the expenditure for what I consider is a very, very small amount, because I know, and I believe you could use more money than that to fulfill some of your goals, so it's my pleasure to move the recommendation.
Recommendation 1, 2, and 3?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are doing a great job. We don't have our information back yet on the, all right. Then we will move to 11B, Council on Aging Annual Report. Ms. Sprigle, would you please introduce, and I know where you are now?
Thank you. Thank you.
And I know you were at the concert yesterday.
I was at the concert yesterday.
I said hello to you, but you were doing what you do, saying hello.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce Chair Seardon and the Samp Chair Commissioner Silverberg to do the Council on Aging report.
Good evening, Ms. Seardon.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. My name is Jim Seardon, and in the past year, I've had the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Council on Aging. The first thing I'd like to do is to introduce our fellow commissioners. If you guys would stand as I call your name. Commissioner Gene Borgi, Nick Fatheringham, David Grimm, Leonard Loomis, Howard Norkin... Harry Norkin, my God. God. I'm sorry, Harry. Martin Shintaz, and Commissioner Mel Silverberg. I... Oh, there she is. I didn't think you were going to make it. And our only good-looking one, Nancy Healy. Want to give these guys...
May we? Thank you.
And it's also a pleasure to be on the same program with the Youth Commission. We've had some similar goals, and we've been working on them together, but they've been extremely helpful to us in all of our events: volunteering to help serve at the senior generation, all of those sorts of things. And we do want to thank you people. We couldn't do any of our events without you. Well, tonight, we're going to present information to you about programs that the Council on Aging has implemented or partnered on to accomplish its task of representing the senior population. We're going to talk about outreach, televised meetings, liaison responsibilities, Senior of the Year, and our Senior Adult Master Plan. Through partnerships with other community agencies that share our goals, we've had the opportunity to present information about senior services to new venues and in new ways. A good example of that would be our partnership with the Cano Valley Realtors Association and Coach Ron Tunick, AM 1400, the Boomer Station. We had the opportunity to do a series of radio shows covering such subjects as the incoming boomer influx. We did a show on volunteerism and the values of that for long life and happy life. And we did a show on extolling the virtues of our fair city and the work of the Council on Aging and what we're doing with the Senior Adult Master Plan. This year, we also had the opportunity to participate in the Ventura County Senior Summit, and we shared a booth with the Youth Commission at the Rotary Street Fair. And as always, we've enjoyed sharing the stage with the Goble Senior Adult Center Generation Celebration. The Commission also serves as liaisons to outside agencies. The Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Liaisons, and try to say that real fast, the liaisons are Commissioner Fatheringham, Loomis, and Silverberg. In this past term, Commissioner Silverberg also served as the V.C. AAA Advisory Council Chair. Vice Chair Shintaz was liaison for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, and myself and Commissioners Norkin and Borgi all serve on the Goble Senior Center Commission. Televised meetings have become one of our greatest outreach resources. At each meeting, professionals are invited to speak as part of a panel of experts on their particular area of expertise. Our speakers have included the Ventura County District Attorney Fraud Division, Area Housing Authority, Cano Valley Board of Realtors, Las Robles Hospital Infection Control Staff, Director of Cardiology and Cardiac Rehab Staff, Ventura County Transportation Commission, and the Thousand Oaks Police and Fire Departments. We also hosted a "Meet the Speakers" reception in some of our meetings to provide a place for guests to meet and ask questions of our speakers, and that worked out very well for At the Senior of the Year Awards Dinner, five amazing nominees were honored, and Mayor Gillette presented Julia Hans as the 2009 Senior of the Year. And I asked Julia to come here for a much-deserved round of applause. Julia, stand up, would you? Julia volunteers for a whole bunch of organizations and has logged virtually thousands of hours in service to our community seniors, and God bless you, baby, is all I can say about that. At this time, I would like to invite Commissioner Silverberg, the Chair of our Senior Adult Master Plan project, to discuss the next portion of this report.
Thank you, Jim, Mayor, Council members, City Manager, and staff. Before getting into details of our report on Samp implementation, there are some important things we wish to highlight about the project. This first year of Samp implementation was successful for a number of reasons. We were able to build a team to develop the implementation strategy for Samp action steps and assign priorities to them. Six volunteer implementation teams, each headed by a team leader with a Council on Aging advisor, were empowered to develop the plans and strategies necessary to proceed. Over 78 meetings were held since October 2009, which equates to over 4,000 volunteer hours. It is only fitting that we recognize these many individuals: professional senior service providers, community volunteers, commissioners, and city staff, who are all part of this excellent team, working together. Will all of our commissioners and Samp Implementation Committee volunteers please stand so we Thank you. We present this report tonight with enthusiasm and pride in having successfully completed the next phase of this challenging journey. The most important overarching result thus far during the launching of the Samp implementation process is the establishment of a strategic framework for City Council to employ in the decision process to meet the challenges of two generations of older adults. Each team concentrated on information gathering and exploration of potential partnerships leading to defined strategies to be pursued during 2010 to 2011. The focus for each area was to identify the highest priority action steps and to develop an initial strategy for implementing these steps. The implementation plan in your packet details each team's prioritization and implementation strategies. Tonight, one of the recommendations is that City Council approves high-priority action steps for implementation this coming fiscal year. The following slides will highlight the high-priority action steps for each of the six teams. The Assistance Team hopes to see a community that includes mechanisms of coordination and communication among service providers, information and assistance resources readily available and known by the community, and funding of critical service nonprofits. This team's high priority is to combine resources with the volunteer team in the development of a central resource center and guide to provide information on the multitude of available services in our community, and I believe you just heard from the Youth Commission on that. Action steps identified as high priority by the Health Team are aimed primarily at providing programs, partnerships, and improved access and information to preventive health care options. With the county's recent decision to build a health center in the city, the Health Team's highest priority is to work with the health care agency to help develop plans by encouraging input from community health and recreation providers. This development is a major step forward towards meeting the health needs addressed in Samp. The Housing Team's highest priority action step has been completed. It was to develop and complete a survey aimed at better defining the future housing needs of the boomer generation. Analysis is now underway to assist in developing strategies for other housing action steps. The highest priority for this team is to gather information on available housing options and provide this information to the public. The first high-priority action step of the Recreation Team is to research options to increase senior recreational space. The Recreation Team achieved an important milestone collaborating with CRPD to initiate a feasibility study for additional recreation space and programs in Newberry Park. For the second high-priority item, removal of age barriers, the Recreation Team recommends exploring possible name changes to the Goble Senior Adult Center, including a tagline and logo in coordination with CRPD. The Transportation Team objectives are to expand and promote existing high-quality public transportation services. Action steps identified as high priority for fiscal year 2010, 2011 are: increase advanced dial-or-ride reservations, increase dial-or-ride evening hours for seniors, create an ambassador program to answer questions and educate the public about our transportation system, and implement weekend fixed route service. Volunteers are needed now more than ever. In developing a strategy for their high-priority action steps, the volunteer team concluded it could be more effective if resources provided by volunteers of every age were combined. In order to do this, a central volunteer resource center is recommended. In researching this, the team discovered that the Police Resource Center, Youth Commission, and the Retired Senior Volunteer Program had similar goals. Meetings have been initiated with representatives from these organizations: the Oaks Mall Management and other possible partners to define operating details of this resource center. It is proposed that the center would provide effective linkage using toll-free telephone number and web-based information and a presence at the Police Resource Center in the Oaks Mall. The goal is to create a volunteer-based resource center where people of all ages could come for information on services and volunteer opportunities in our community and receive services provided by the Police Resource Center. Thanks to volunteers, there would be little cost in development which would take place over the next year. However, implementing and long-range management of volunteer staff for a project this size will require additional staff time, estimated at 1,000 hours per year minimum, to be considered in the next budget cycle. In addition to all the high-priority items outlined by the Samp teams previously, the overarching goal is to provide information to the public. Development of a central resource center would benefit all Samp Implementation Committee teams by providing a space where they can share their information with our citizens. Combining resources of the Samp Retired Senior Volunteer Program, Police Department, and youth, make this an all-inclusive center where all citizens can go to find out about resources, events, volunteer opportunities, and even get a marriage license, passport, home check, or fingerprints, adopting an innovative model of a community resource center, supported by volunteers and joint efforts of community human service nonprofits. The continued development of a robust outreach strategy is essential to the success of the Samp project and the entire suite of Council on Aging programs to reach seniors and boomers. First, so they are aware of life-enriching programs and services available now, and second, to keep them informed of new services, which will become available as the Senior Adult Master Plan implementation process moves forward. The Commission recognizes that the city is currently undergoing major fiscal challenges. Samp is a project with minimal fiscal resources due to numerous volunteer resources. The continued success of Samp implementation will depend critically upon maintaining a high level of interest and support from the city, such that the dedication and motivation of this strong cadre of community volunteers will be enhanced by the city's response to their pioneering efforts. Thank you for your continued support of the Senior Adult Master Plan project. Chair Seardon will conclude the Council on Aging report.
Thank you, Mel. Chair Seardon will turn the page. In an effort to continue our work with the challenging fiscal environment, Council on Aging and all of our Samp volunteers with the direction of knowledgeable staff are utilizing this time for information gathering for programs such as the Resource Center, the weekend fixed route service, and additional recreation space, as Mel just mentioned. When fiscally appropriate, Council on Aging will return to direct cost to implement these programs. With the implementation of the Adult Master Plan and the outreach plans, the Commission has reviewed its establishing resolution and believes that lowering the age to 55 will assist us in being more effective in serving both our generations of seniors. With your approval, in going forward, our goals include enhancing existing programs, reaching out to more seniors and to more boomers, continually increasing our televised meeting effectiveness, and implementing high-priority Samp action steps as we have outlined here this evening. Before we conclude, we have a couple of programs coming up in the fall that we would like to mention. In September, I will be a guest speaker at the Ventura County Housing Conference session titled "Four Generations: Housing Dreams and Realities." Commissioner Silverberg will be a guest speaker at the Ventura County Home Care Association. And our October and November televised meetings will feature knowledgeable speakers on senior concerns caregiving programs and a whole series on Medicare. And we would like to invite everyone to attend a Council on Aging televised meeting. You get to hear valuable information, and we even give you a chance to share a milestone with us if you've got one. Our meetings are held on the first Wednesday of each month at 1:00 p.m. in the boardroom here at City Hall. For information, you can email us at councilonaging@tox.org, or call the magic number 449-2743. 449-2743. There's nothing you can't get there. I order pizzas there. In summary, Council on Aging is requesting the City Council approve resolution changes, implementation of high-priority items, and initial administrative funding of priority items, and consideration of additional funding in the next two-year budget. We want to thank you for supporting the Council on Aging and our Sampic efforts. It's a pleasure to serve this council and this city and its citizens. Thank you very much. Commissioner Silverberg and I and everybody else that's here will be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions? Ms. Spilldale, opinion?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you very much for the work that you have been doing and are doing. Do you feel that $1,700 is enough to get you going?
Yes. We have to be reasonable here. One of the advantages that we have, and with the reason we're so darn cost-effective, is in addition to the nine of us, we have all of these incredible movers and shakers in the city working with us, for us, for nothing. But we can make that $1,700 work. I'd like a lot more.
Very good. And regarding the resolution, I know that many of you had talked about limiting your terms on the Council on Aging. Is that... That is not in this resolution?
That's correct.
Is that something that you, in the end, decided against, or how did that...
Yes, we voted against that.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions are coming? Mrs. Irwin?
I don't have any questions, just to comment. Just like I said with the Youth Commission, you guys do fantastic work, and I really do like to see what the outcome is of working with the Youth Commission on the Resource Center. I think that's a fabulous idea, and thank you again. I think that's a fabulous idea, and thank you again for all your work during the year.
Well, I'd like to say about that that, yes, that's a great thing, but one of our goals is to try to figure out how to get a lot of intergenerational programs going, and this is a really good start at that.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion, just a couple of observations with the presentation. Within the recommendations, a couple of things. Number one, ease of movement of individuals throughout the community, ease of movement, getting around. We have for some time, we took forward a proposal through the Transportation Commission and have talked with Moore Park and Simi Valley, and have laid the initial framework for the development of a regional transit authority. We will never be able to get to the size of vehicles and frequency of movement that many of our residents have enjoyed in more eastern, older communities until we have such a public, full participation of the community in a public transportation authority. And I would envision that eventually we will have one, it will grow, and it may well merge with Gold Coast, and we'll have a Ventura County Public Transportation Authority right now with Vista and each municipality having its own municipal transit system. It's difficult at best, and I was listening to some of the, or reading some of the material that you had about having people help, tell people just how to use it, because it can be intimidating. It's not the way it was in downtown Minneapolis where you walk to a corner and you get on a streetcar and away you go. So that one, and also, we are all, and as a community, extremely proud of the activities and the development and how the senior center in this community has grown over the 47-year history of the city. And each time I go down there, I'm amazed at how busy it is and how many people are there. And that prompted us to have discussions with Caneo Recreation and Park District. We there, too, have laid some initial groundwork for the creation of the second senior center in the Newberry Park area to serve all of the senior population, but especially the Newberry Park population and those folks that live large numbers in mobile home parks and what have you that would be better served if there was a senior center. The formula works. What Francine and her folks have done over the years and Mina before, all the people that have been involved, Tom and his staff, everybody works. This is probably not a time for spending, but it certainly is a time for planning. And the planning what you brought forward is so consistent with the goals that were adopted by the council in its spring goal-setting session. And also the reference to the VIPs. Phenomenal resource that works so well and integrates so well with utilizing volunteers in so many areas across the spectrum, not just policing, but in community outreach areas. So we've got the formula, we know how to make it work, continue to work together, and we'll get through this economic situation we're in, and when we're done, perhaps we'll have an implementation plan ready to go. So we're all working together for the same, going in the same direction, and to all of you, thank you so very, very much. Pleasure of the council. Mr. Fox?
Sure, I'll move the recommendation to adopt the Council on Aging report. Just not to be redundant, just echo Mayor Gillette's comments. While a lot of cities are struggling because of lack of financial resources, you guys are doing exactly what needs to be done, and that's plan for the future, plan when times get better. They will get better, although albeit it may take a while, but the plans and the efforts that you guys have put in are very needed and really remarkable work. Great teamwork, too. As I listen to your report, it's obvious there's a lot of teamwork, a lot of helping. It's good to see.
If I might add, Councilmember Fox, that, again, for many, many reasons, but we could not be this far one year from last year without the folks that are up here in the, I mean, these 40 volunteers. I have never seen a dedicated group like that as volunteers. I haven't seen, even in my professional career, haven't seen, you know, people working, dedicated people, working with the spirit that they're working with and bringing the experience, life experience with them. And I'm overwhelmed by, we're all overwhelmed by just what they do, and we have to keep that going.
And as Mel mentioned, if I might say this one more time, we have a strong desire to keep this cadre of people together, and your support of our efforts goes a long way toward showing these people that their work means something.
Yeah. You can feel it. I mean, you can actually feel the teamwork and the synergy of the group. Everybody's up there smiling, you're making a report. It's great to see.
That's a good word.
All right. Yeah, the skill set and the commitment shows, comes through loud and clear. Any additional comments? Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
5-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Follow-up reports from meetings, conferences attended by council members. Mrs. Irwin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gillette. On August 18th through the 20th, I was at the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, and this is the conference that deals with underage drinking issues. I went with three of the Thousand Oaks Police Officers and a number of other prevention experts in the county, and as usual, it was very enlightening. The program that I really saw this year that we might be able to get the schools interested in is a program that is in New Mexico now called the American Athletic, it's called The Life of an Athlete. And what this program in New Mexico does is there is an online video course that all athletes are required to take that basically outlines all the dangers of drinking, but also the effect on athletic performance. The people that go to this conference, what they are concerned about is reducing the amount of underage drinking, and one of the biggest trouble groups is athletes, and athletes are also, at most schools, about 40 to 60 percent of the population. So if you can reduce the amount of drinking of athletes, you can really make a difference. There's another, a number of other programs from this conference that we've implemented, and Ventura County, not only did we have some speakers, but they were mentioned a number of times as a very progressive county. We were the first county that passed Social Host Ordinance, the first county in the country, and there were about 10 programs on social host ordinances and other cities in the country trying to pass them. So very good information. We're going to follow up with the school district and our police department to see if we can implement some more programs. So my recommendation is to receive the report.
Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. Item 13, we did have, I did ask the city manager to speak on a couple of the issues that came up under public concern. Mr. Mitnick, anything further on city manager follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, a few follow-up items. We heard from some of the enclave and Reed, or enclave residents earlier tonight, and they did mention the Simi Valley landfill expansion project. City staff is monitoring that. We will follow up with those residents and make sure their concerns are articulated through that review process, and we'll provide an update to city council. We also heard some comments or questions and suggestions about the city's website. Staff will review and follow up and report back on that. When the Youth Commission was giving its presentation, some discussion about the school resource officers and how they're utilized. I did confirm with the police chief. We do provide, the SROs do in fact, assist with the private schools, and as part of the follow-up from the items and that part of the agenda, we'll clarify the role of the police department there. We certainly can do more. We'll also get an answer to the question of what percent of the students in Thousand Oaks go to a private school, so we'll have that. Then looking at the upcoming agenda items, oh, by the way, it is usually at this time that the city manager would provide an update on the state budget situation and how it impacts the cities in general, Thousand Oaks in particular. We stopped doing that recently because it was like an ongoing soap opera that the state is without a budget, 69 days overdue, and there are serious deficiencies in Sacramento. We do hear about the billions of dollars that need to be made up, and there's draconian cuts on the table, including continuing with the unpaid furloughs for state employees. And now the word is that the State Controller's Office will once again be issuing IOUs for the second consecutive year. So it's a dire situation in Sacramento. The city's legislative manager continues to monitor the situation daily and will provide updates, and we're trying to hang on to our general fund and redevelopment agency dollars as best we can. So the next council meeting will be on September 28th, and at this time, we have, am I out of order here on this part? No. The next, on September 28th, we have three public hearings and two reports worth noting. The public hearings are somewhat routine and sort of housekeeping. We have the annual CDBG report, the annual, what's called the Annual CAPR or the Annual, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. This is an accounting of how we spent the federal monies in our community. Second public hearing is the routine, state-mandated, public health goals, drinking water standards report. Our water is in very good shape here, we'll provide that report. The third public hearing involves construction and demolition debris ordinance, some housekeeping changes to that ordinance need to be done. Two department reports worth noting. The one-year status update for fiscal year 2009-10 that ended on June 30th, staff is going to give an update on the city council goals, objectives, top priorities, benchmarking and performance measures. And then we'll have a water conservation update as a separate report as well. And again, this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, we heard from a number of speakers, a lot of stuff going on this weekend, but in particular here at the lakes and in front of City Hall will be the annual Thousand Oaks Arts Festival, Arts Festival I should say, and we'll have more information on the city website. So that's it, by the way, city manager follow-up. Again, there were a number of other items mentioned this weekend. At the Reagan Library, there's the 9/11 event, the horse item, the...
The horse.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the equestrians on the bike path and the horse path, equestrian path at Caneo Park. Yeah, we did talk about that. We are going to follow up with those residents that spoke, and staff will be contacting them tomorrow, and we'll also work with the park district, continue to work with the park district on that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mitnick. We'll now, I see the city clerk has returned, so we'll return to item 8A, the last portion of it, and we'll ask the city clerk to please announce the results of the ballot proceedings. Madam city clerk?
Thank you, mayor. The ballot tabulation resulted in a passing of the assessment levy. There was a yes in the amount of $45,790.38, which was 36.60 percent. The no votes were in the amount of $27,173.15, 21.72 percent.
With that in mind, the measure does pass. Mr. Wartek, council action based on the results?
I'm stepping in for Gary. The council now has to receive the results of the ballot tabulation, and then the second part is to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the ballot proceeding for renewal. And the other items under five, which are to authorize expenditure of $4,500 and authorized expenditure of $12,715. So there's three items under five the council has to adopt.
Okay, do we have to, madam city clerk, do we have to reopen the public hearing to receive any additional ballots?
No.
Item two, or that's concluded?
Yes.
Item three, we've closed the public hearing? That's concluded. Receive the report? That's concluded. The results are in favor. Pleasure of the council. We need to adopt a resolution declaring the results. Dr. Glancy?
I'll move.
Have a motion, comment to the motion?
The motion carries 4-1 with Councilmember Bill de la Pena dissenting.
Does the title have to be read on that?
No.
Okay. Item B, expenditure 4528. I assume we take these, take each one of these separately?
My understanding was you were, Dr. Glancy was recommending approval for items 4, 5, A, B, and C.
Okay. Dr. Glancy, clarification? Fine.
Yes.
Okay. So is that, everyone clear on that and everyone in agreement with it? I believe that's, all right. Madam city clerk or city attorney, is there anything else that needs to be done on that item?
No.
Item 14, closed session. Madam city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and viewing public. Council will be going into closed session with real property negotiators. It's the property at 1858 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Agency negotiators are Candace Hong, Assistant City Manager, Amy Albano, City Attorney. Negotiating parties for the property owner is Manny, and it's F-A-R-Z-A-N-E-H, and the last name is D-E-G-A-N-I, under negotiation price and terms pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 of the Government Code. And there will not be a need to report anything out after that action.
All right. Thank you. And before we get to our adjournment, as we get on those items of significant community interest and notable and to everyone's concern, today is the Assistant City Manager's birthday. Mrs. Hong, we want to wish you a very happy birthday and best returns to the day. We won't go into which one this is, but congratulations from all of us. This evening, we're adjourning our meeting in memory of three exceptional community individuals. Our first adjournment is in memory of Lisa Young, daughter of Richard and Joan Young, longtime owners of Young Realty. Richard and Joan lost their daughter Lisa to cancer on July 26th. Lisa was born in Santa Monica, California in 1964, moved to the Caneo Valley when she was two years old. During her life, she also spent 12 years living in Maui, Hawaii. Lisa was known and appreciated for her exuberant personality, zest for life, wonderful sense of humor, and ability to make friends everywhere she went. She began her career in the field of cosmetology and eventually combined her creative ability and exceptional computer skills in her seven-year marketing and advertising... and exceptional computer skills in her seven-year marketing and advertising career for Young Realtors and Sotheby's International Realty. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I'd like to extend our deepest sympathies to the young family. Lisa will be dearly missed by all of her family and friends. Our second adjournment is in honor of Nancy Briggs, mother of Nancy Arita, Associate Analyst in our Public Works Department. Nancy was born in 1932 in Hollywood, California, and raised in Westwood. She married in 1955 to Jean Briggs, a 47-year resident of Simi Valley. Nancy has numerous accomplishments during her lifetime. They include being crowned Miss Hollywood in the '40s, earning her degree as a registered nurse, working as a narcotics investigator for the U.S. government, working as a commercial artist for the Herald Examiner, and a greeting card designer for Hallmark. Nancy also volunteered for numerous activities in her community. On behalf of the city council, we wish to extend our sincerest condolences to Nancy's entire family. Our final adjournment tonight is in memory of a young man who was killed in the service of our country. U.S. Army Specialist Andrew Jordan, A.J. Castro, only 20 years old, was the son of Westlake High School athletic coach Hector Castro and Carmen Roman. Following his 2008 graduation from Westlake High School, Andrew was firmly set on his future. He chose to enlist in the U.S. Army where he would serve his country. Stationed in Afghanistan for less than one month, A.J. was killed along with another soldier when insurgents attacked their unit with an improvised explosive device. This former Westlake football player was well-liked by students and faculty. He was known for his kind, respectful, and giving personality. Our hearts go out to the Castro family on the shock of A.J.'s death. On behalf of the city council, I would like to express our deepest sympathies to the entire Castro family. Your son will always be remembered for his ultimate sacrifice to our country. At this time, we adjourn to our regular meeting. Next regular meeting, September 28th, 2010. We are adjourned.